And staff are participating from remote locations practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission may do so during public comment or may comment on agenda items during the discussion of each item and must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comments.
Thank you, Chair Fritz.
Thanks. So now we will move on to a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Douche. Zach, I can see you, but you're muted. I'll come back to him. Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Here.
Chair Fritz.
Here.
And it looks like Commissioner Douche dropped off, so he might be having technical issues, but we did see him here as well. I'll note when he comes back.
All right, thanks. So the first item on the agenda is we have two meetings of minutes to approve. Let's take July 13th first. Does anyone have any comments on the draft minutes of July 13th?
I do.
All right.
Carrie, no, if you got my email regarding.
I did, and we haven't corrected that, but if you wanted to read into the record as well, Commissioner.
Okay, sure. It was stated that I had called the meeting to order and also adjourned the meeting, so which is not correct. So since the chair was here, so I just want to correct that.
Yeah, I had to go back. I thought I was here. Was I not there? I'd actually go back and look at the video. Yeah, it was me. And I also, it says Carrie read the Zoom thing, so you can fix that too, I guess.
Thank you. That may have been from the prior meeting.
Yeah, I think I missed.
When you were on vacation. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments on July 13th? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I move approval of the minutes of July 13th.
I second them.
All right, thanks. We have a roll call for that, Carrie.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Here, I mean, yes.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Hi.
Commissioner Burns, and I know Commissioner Burns, you weren't here, so I assume you want to abstain.
I was here at the last meeting. Was it the last meeting?
No, this is for July 7th. It was before your appointment. Yeah. Okay, Vice Chair Ottinger.
Yes.
Chair Fritz.
Yes.
And Commissioner Douche. Commissioner Douche, I know that you were not at that meeting, but if you've read the minutes, you can either vote or abstain. Okay, we can hear you now, Zach.
All right, good.
I suspect he's having some technical issues. So we will just count him as abstaining, I think, unless he comes back and says otherwise, since he wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right, then we also have our last meeting of July 27th. And does anyone have any comments on those minutes? I did have one comment on page five. Just kind of a typo, I think, but Peggy Porter, applicant about the middle of the page. She says that reads that she, the church passes out, bug passes. I think it's supposed to be a bus pass.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Any other comments on those minutes? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll move to per. A second.
And we'll do a roll vote. Commissioner Kelly.
Yep.
Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Yes.
And Chair Fritz.
Yes.
Okay, those are approved.
Right, so the next item on our agenda is comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. So if you have any item you'd like to discuss with the planning commission, please bring it forward now, as long as it's not the item that we'll be discussing later in the agenda. You can either raise your virtual or actual hand, and we will, planning commissioner response from will call on you.
Okay, and while we're doing that, I will note that we did not receive any comments in the last couple of weeks via email from the commission. Okay, I'm seeing none. Chair Fritz.
All right, so then we'll move on. Does anyone have a conflicted interest for tonight? All right, then we will move on to our main item, which is the Calder Creek Naturalization and Creek Restoration Visioning Talk with Ann Riley. So do you like to give us some background? Carrie?
Yes, I would, thank you. So this item is actually quite exciting, and I know the commission, many of the commissioners are very excited about this as well. As you all know, in, I believe it was 2013, the Ives Park Master Plan was adopted with the concept of naturalizing the with several elements, one of which was naturalizing Calder Creek with, as it runs through the park. And while the commission and the city council have been working on a number of different items to implement other aspects of the master plan, like the sculpture garden that's going in and the pathway improvements and the pool upgrades. Okay. One of the bigger items is the Calder Creek Naturalization, and so this year's capital improvement budget has the background work for doing hydrology studies and the creek channel design in it. And GHD will be doing that, and then we were also approached by Waterway Restoration Institute, which is Riley, who is here this evening, who, and I made it this wrong rally, and you can go ahead and correct me. She's working with Jessica Hall, who has received a fellowship from the Switzer Foundation, an environmental organization. And Zach, I think that's you, so I'm going to keep you on mute, if that's okay for now. The Switzer Foundation, foundation, Jessica Hall is the fellow, and the two of them approached the city and myself through Vice Chair Ottinger and Commissioner Fernandez, our Ives Park Subcommittee, as looking for a project to work on in the city, specifically Calder Creek, and hoping us envision what that could be. And so they're here with us tonight as a kickoff for that part of it. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Riley and Jessica.
Oh, thank you, Carrie. Am I coming through loud and clear?
Perfect, yes.
Okay. We're very lucky to have an esteemed Switzer Foundation fellow in the form of Jessica Hall to assist the city in trying to envision what Calder Creek could be. And the product we hope will come out of this after interacting with the community is formally designed, drafted, scaled plans at PlanView and Cross Section with some alternatives that would show different scenarios for what we could do with Calder Creek. What the purpose of this presentation is, is I think it helps communities to try to envision what the creek could be if they've seen what other communities have done, particularly small towns and towns with very limited budgets. So Jessica, we're ready to roll on the PowerPoint.
Okay, great. And I just want to check, are you able to see the full presentation? Are you seeing the the version that has the side panel with notes?
We're seeing the one that has the next slide. So we're seeing both the cover slide and Santa Rosa Creek.
For some reason, it's not letting me bring the presentation up. It's got it on my second screen.
Yeah, I know this has happened before. I just can never remember what the setting is to get it to be the full screen.
Yeah, well, so I apologize because I know that detracts from your ability to see the presentation. And it's funny because it's showing the full thing on my second monitor, so that's annoying. And I can't just drag the screen share. Can I? Oh, how's that? Are you able to, did that change it?
No change.
No change, okay. Display settings. How about that?
There we go. That did it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, Jessica, let's go to Santa Rosa Creek. Right next door. Santa Rosa Creek was channelized in the 1960s, and this is what it looked like. It was just a trapezoidal flood control channel lined in concrete. Next slide. And this is what it started to look like around 1999. The city of Santa Rosa came in and took up the concrete. They created a floodplain. They started planting the creek. Next slide. And today, it looks like this with various ways of accessing the creek, both sort of the mid-channel, the floodplain, and up high. Next slide. But what, yeah, next slide. The thing that I want you to notice is that they put the greenery down on the creek channel. And the more architectural treatments, you can kind of see up there on the left, where there are some floodwalls and trails, go up high on the top of the, on top of the ground. And, you know, this is important because the tradition of dealing with urban creeks was let's keep the concrete and the rock next to the creek, and we'll just pretty it up by putting some trees on the top of the bank. And so this was really a nice effort at ecological restoration along the channel, even though what they're doing is jackhammering up a trapezoidal channel. Next slide. And the flood of 2005 was able to contain the design flood for that channel, even with all that vegetation, and they did not need to widen the right of way. They just used the old 1960s project right of way. So a lot of times, communities don't understand that there is a lot you can do within an original narrow right of way to help a creek out, although the more width you have, the better. Next slide. And what was so wonderful was the community involvement, the high school, you know, putting up a mural of the steelhead that are now migrating up that creek. Next slide. And as a matter of fact, the 2021 Santa Rosa City Council is considering a plan where they restore the creek going through the civic center and actually remove buildings and daylight Santa Rosa Creek as part of, you know, revitalizing the civic center. Next slide. This is San Luis Obispo, 1970s, very apropos for Calder Creek because it was a trapezoidal flood control channel. Mostly concrete, there were some WPA rock walls. And next slide, Jessica, what's so interesting about this project is it was the business community that wanted to enhance the creek to bring back more businesses to downtown San Luis Obispo because people were running off to shop in malls. This is an early slide in the 70s where they worked within, you know, these sort of WPA floodwalls and put vegetation along the creek. The next slide, you'll see that over time, another slide, that what this turns into is more of a ecological restoration project where, you know, there's alders and maples and native vegetation right along the creek. And this is a central coast steelhead creek. So while I was eating dinner over on the right slide, part of the slide, there's actually a restaurant, there was a fight between a steelhead and a you know, a large waiting bird who wanted to eat it. And luckily, the steelhead got away. I was, I was voting for the steelhead. But the upstream part of this project is, is the first slide we showed of San Luis Obispo Creek. And as the city restored, reach after reach, each reach became more ecological over time. So this, this would be more of a slide from the 2000s, and the first slide was more of a slide from the 1970s. Next slide. And what they did, you know, San Luis Obispo Creek really flooded downtown a lot. And they put in some door dams in front of their businesses before, you know, when they would get flood warnings. And they also use these WPA walls at the top in order to prevent overflows into the community. Next slide. Back to the 70s again, Boulder Creek in Boulder, Colorado. Again, the motivation was from the business community to bring more people downtown, attract tourists. One of the objectives was mermaid restoration, the final objection, mermaid habitat restoration. The final objective was to actually create an Olympic kayaking run, which I don't really see on Calder Creek, but yeah, what is interesting is, is the business commercial interests in these various early projects. Next slide. Another good example of that, the San Antonio Riverwalk. This is dated 1973. And over the last 40 years, San Antonio has restored eight miles of river downstream of this original, very architectural, you know, very structural riverwalk with the idea that they would encourage even more tourists to come to San Antonio and see a natural river. You know, going through this very urban area. Next slide. Then we started approaching the, what I would call, daylighting era. This is the 1980s now, and creeks that were underground in culverts, this is a street where the creek is running underground in a pipe, got dug up. Next slide. And you can see this process where the the culvert has been taken out. There's a whole new meandering creek being excavated here. Next slide. This is on the University of California property on the city of Berkeley in Albany. This was a very, very low budget project. Basically, you're seeing here cut off limbs from willows and some alder trees being stuck in the ground to revegetate this area with an extremely narrow right of way to work within, but look how much meandering went into that. Next slide. And this is about a year later. That's the new housing development that went in as part of this project. Next slide. And this is the floodplain in forested area during high water. So it was also, primary purpose of this project was flood control for this new housing development. So there's, there's no, you know, there does not have to be a conflict between controlling floods and erosion control and having a natural creek. You'll note there is no riprock, gavians, or any structural features in this, this creek. Next slide. We're now in downtown Napa, going back to the 70s again. And this is the first day lighting project I'm aware of in the country. There used to be a concrete slab over this creek in the foreground of what you're looking at. That's Main Street in the background. The concrete slab was, was taken up. Next slide, there is a very architectural treatment of that creek. And the idea again was to create an environment where people would want to come go shopping at the Murrins Department Store nearby, and more people would visit the downtown. So it's interesting to me that it was the business community that really kicked off these early projects. Next slide. Now, what you're seeing here is those architectural features being taken out. So we're now at about, oh, let's see, 2011 here. And one of the mistakes that some of these earlier projects made, and this, this is a good example, is when we were putting in these architectural you know, features that, to bring people to the creek, that they ended up backing up the floodwaters and creating these hydraulic constrictions. And so when we did modeling this creek, we realized that these were creating floods, you know, a mile upstream. Was, it was that influential. Next slide. And so they were taken out, and what you see now, the banks were pulled back in the background, and soil bioengineering was used, and I'm going to talk more about how plants are now replacing these retaining walls to hold stream banks. Next slide. Another thing, another strategy that the city of Napa used to control flooding was to have some of the flows go into a bypass channel to a different part of town. So basically, it was like having two creek channels go through town, and then, then the channels enter the Napa River. Next slide. This was a typical scene along Napa Creek, your classic urban creek with houses and porches and so forth, teetering over the edge of the creek. Next slide. And so what this project did was pull the creek away from a house that's, that's in the, the yellow circle. And what you're seeing here in the foreground is fish habitat structures with roots and also these soil bioengineering systems I'm talking about. By the 2000s, the Army Corps of Engineers and Natural Resources Conservation Service rewrote their engineering manuals and began to practice using plants as opposed to concrete walls, retaining walls, old rock, WPA walls, to stabilize stream banks. And so what you're looking at right here is an Army Corps of Engineers flood control project using these techniques in downtown Napa. Next slide. And that's a beaver that moved in. I don't see beaver moving into Calder Creek, but the public does love wildlife. And, and they love teaching their kids about fish and the birds and, you know, the, the wildlife that should be part of these creek quarters. Next slide. And indeed, in downtown Martinez, some beaver moved in. There was a lot of fears about flooding. They, they put in some caster masters to prevent the beer dams from flooding. I will go into the details on that, but there are things you can do to mitigate that kind of thing. And, you know, again, these are, this is a mural done by kids in town to celebrate the beaver that, as the mayor says, Martinez is probably the only city in the United States that has beaver living 15 feet from a parking meter. Next slide. This is Cortez's Creek. It forms the boundary of the city of Berkeley and Albany. Again, a big flooding issue. Over on the right is a US Postal Service wall. This, something needed to be done about the erosion and how this creek flooded in order to put in a new housing development. Next slide. You kind of see the condition of that creek and the post office wall. Next slide. And so after a series of planning sessions over actually several years, some buildings were moved away. Next slide. A corridor was assigned to the creek. The development envelope was moved back 15 feet so that there could be a functional creek where the width and depth of the creek wouldn't excessively erode or deposit, where there could be a mathematically calculated meander, so so as to stabilize the creek. Next slide. And here's the, the project being constructed, and that, that post office wall was moved back 15 feet to make room for a trail. And the bill for this project that's happened in several from 2002 to about 2011 was picked up by the and the California Natural Resources Agency River Parkway Program, the California Coastal Conservancy. And as a matter of fact, most all the projects I'm showing, with just a couple of exceptions, are state funded. And there's no reason why the city of Sebastopol couldn't find a project the same way. Next slide. This was a staging area put along this creek by the public, designed by Citizens Group. And they worked with the Coastal Conservancy to bring in some money to put in interpretive signs and plant more plants. And, you know, so it was really a community project. Next slide. We're in the same creek system here. This is a plumbing company. There was concrete along this, this Cortez's Creek banks. The concrete was taken out. It was kind of a hairy situation here. Okay, next slide. Next slide. And what stabilizes creek was the soil bioengineering I've been talking about. Yet uses bundles of plants. Willow in particular, dogwood. We add other canopy trees such as alders, maples, buckeye, et cetera, as part of these systems. But except for the exit from the culvert, you see that the soil bioengineering has replaced the concrete. There's no gavians, there's no riprap, there's no retaining walls. Next slide. That's what it looked like a year later, and I can already hear some minds saying, yes, but we don't want Calder Creek to look like that. That's too weedy with too many willows. Okay, next slide. That's too weedy with too many willows, okay, next slide. Alright, that's how it evolved. So we uh selectively cut some of the willow out, we added more canopy trees. The willow we took out was then used to restore other creeks. Okay, and this is in a very tight space between uh these industrial buildings on the left and new housing on the right. Next slide. Uh, not, this is just to say that um the design process for these, these projects uh have been, have evolved into being fairly sophisticated uh over the last forty years. Uh, we, we now know that you have to have uh the right width for the creek, the right depth. Uh, you have to use uh several scientific methods of, of attaining these numbers. Uh, because if you don't put the right shapes in, you get excessive erosion or you get excessive deposition. Next slide. The other important thing is trying to get the slope of the creek or its length or its meander in an equilibrium condition. Next slide. Uh, so this is what this, this area looks like today. Uh, the housing development is right off on the right. Here's a trail that follows the creek, next slide. And a soccer field over on the right. Uh, I think you can see that's a soccer field. Um, so, so that the recreational field acts as a flood basin. For large overflows in the winter. And then uh the rest of the year is just, you know, used as an athletic field. Next slide. Uh, downstream, um, the railroad uh had a very low trestle. That was backing up the flows, the flows are flooding through Berkeley and Albany. Uh, various regulatory agencies made the railroad, put in a new culvert. So this flooding would stop. And I know um uh that um Rachel Kaman with uh HDG, do I have that right? GHD, sorry. Uh, has suggested that there, she's thinking that there are some hydraulic constrictions like this in the Calder Creek system that I think she wants to call out. And uh, that would be an important part of uh both short and long-term planning for Calder Creek, next slide. Um, this is a interesting project in uh the city of San Pablo. City San Pablo is formally classified as a disadvantaged community by the state of California. Uh, has very little resources, but uh the community made a decision to uh move this ball field over uh because it lies on top of Wildcat Creek. Next slide. You can see the creek going through this culvert underneath the ball field, which is now being moved, next slide. There's that culvert that's going through that ball field area that's being taken out, next slide. And this is shortly thereafter where the new baseball field is off to the left and the new creek that used to go over, that used to go under the creek is now daylighted and restored. Um, so these creeks end up being real recreational features uh where kids go and play. And their parents take their kids to the creeks to go play. So um, you know, we've learned from the community to think of creeks as places you go with your parents or your friends to play. Next slide.
And this is in Los Angeles County and it's a project that I worked on uh many years ago doing the visioning and conceptual design phase. Where you have here Johnny Carson Park. And this, what you see on the left might look like a stream, but it's actually some very artful concrete work that is made to simulate a stream where a stream actually was. And you can see in the inset that there's erosion, kind of the typical issues that you would find um with a stream that's been altered. And there was a park renovation project going on and so part of my job was to work with the community um and the stakeholders to convince folks that a naturalization would be a great thing for this park. The design team was super excited about it. And then um, in working with um others, I came up with this restoration concept for naturalizing the stream, setting that stream geometry that Riley was talking about. And working as a team to integrate it into the park setting so that it felt like part of this park. And the features of the park could be enhanced by the presence of the stream. This is Southern California, you're seeing a dry arroyo, that's of what a lot of streams in LA would naturally be like. Um, the water is percolating into the ground and feeding the groundwater table, which is a really good thing. And there is just a massive, you know, riparian corridor where the previously had been grassed. So this is, I think, a, a nice example of how a park can be enhanced by a small stream.
Uh, we're now in the city of El Cerrito. Again, a small city with very few resources. Uh, this is what Baxter Creek used to look like. Uh, near San Pablo Avenue, it uh attracted a pretty significant homeless population, trash, garbage. Uh, it was adjacent to a railroad right away, uh, next slide. Uh, there, there's another before shot of uh weed strewn fields. So a very trashed out creek, next slide. Uh, it was restored around uh, let's see, two thousand five to two thousand seven, right in there. Again, you're, you see that, that channel has been widened, uh, some sinuosity has been added, next slide. And it was planted with these beautiful trees and the, the city of El Cerrito decided to call this the gateway to the city. So they, they created a staging area, you could come and sit, you go visit the creek, you take a trail along the creek. Next slide. Uh, we're now again in El Cerrito, up in the hills. Uh, ten percent slope, very steep street. And what you're looking at is a very nice grassed area, it's a median strip between two streets. And there's a culvert under there that was really undersized. It wasn't carrying the capacity flood that the city really wanted to see. Um, and so it ended up, uh, they, they did a bunch of calculations. Uh, the original idea was to put in a bigger culvert, but it ended up to be cheaper to take out the culvert and put in an open channel. For uh controlling floods, so next, next slide shows uh the, the culverts being dug out, next slide. There are the culverts, next slide. Uh, and so a series of different sized rocks were used to make steps and pools or waterfalls. You see the soil bioengineering that's been planted on the margins. Over on the right, you see those, those plants growing in. So it's just like a stream you would see on the Sierra Mountains, uh, next slide. And what's so interesting, this is a Berkeley professor, architecture professor, taking a photo from a kite, a camera on a kite. Uh, this is pre-drone days, but what's so interesting to me is the neighborhood insisted on having this thick forest in the middle of the street. Uh, because they didn't want to, they wanted uh privacy for uh their front lawns and their houses. Uh, they also love taking their kids into this wild area, you know, in the middle of the street. Uh, next slide. That's sort of a street level photo of what it looks like today, next slide. Uh, we're now in a, a poverty area of Richmond in a park. Uh, this is what the creek used to look like. Next slide. And again, uh, restoration project was put in, uh, I think this is around two thousand. Uh, soil bioengineering once again, holding the banks, next slide. And uh, in order to handle community concerns of the creek being in a park in a very high crime zone. Uh, the police department, uh nonprofits, the city parks department. Uh, the public works department lock the corridor together and prune branches and do planting plans to have windows through the creek corridor so that the, the park staff can see and people feel safe. Next, next slide. Uh, we're in a, a schoolyard, Blackberry Creek Thousand Oaks School. Uh, this was the school that Kamala Harris integrated. Uh, just a historic note, uh, there's a culvert running under here, next slide. Now, what's so interesting about this case is the bottom of that culvert is twenty feet below the, the, the top of that site. In a schoolyard, so, next slide. Um, you know, that, there's, that's a really deep creek in the middle of a schoolyard, that's where the culvert's being cut, next slide. There's that soil bioengineering going on again. Uh, the engineers uh who started uh publishing books on how effective these plants were in holding banks uh starting in the eighties and nineties. Uh, the, the chair of the engineering department at the University of Michigan discovered that the tensile strength of the roots of these, of these uh willow systems were equal to or greater than a tight tensile strength of concrete. Really pretty fascinating where they merged uh mechanical engineering with uh native plant ecology. Next slide. And that's, that's uh, you know, it can create jobs uh to bring in youth groups, Conservation Corps, AmeriCorps to put in these systems uh which are nonprofit is sponsored many training opportunities and jobs uh with these projects. Next slide. Uh, that's what it looked like right after uh construction over on the right is about nine months later. Next slide shows, uh, I think about, yeah, go ahead Jessica, about three years later. Sorry, that's black and white, but uh, next slide. Uh, and so in, what a great thing to do near a school. We have a school near Calder Creek. I am aware that there's some teachers interested in being engaged with Calder Creek. And these are tiles made by the students at Thousand Oaks School uh and set up next to the creek, next slide. Uh, I think that we're just about at the end. Uh, this was a, a expansive concrete area in El Cerrito, uh, kind of underneath the bark uh tracks. Uh, next slide. Next slide. And this is a new housing development going in, and what is so interesting about this project is the city of El Cerrito conditioned the housing development on daylighting this creek. So the developer picked up the tab on this project. Um, but like I said, this is one of the exceptions in terms of funding sources. Almost all these projects, even the one with the baseball field being moved, were funded by these state programs. So we're at that, uh, about a half hour here. Um, I'd be glad to take questions if you want, but you may need to go on with your meeting. Uh, what we see as the next steps in this process is holding a public meeting in September. Uh, having as a topic, uh, a short educational piece on uh, the successes and failures of urban creek restoration projects. So people are aware of, hey, how do we, how do we avoid failures? And how do we make sure we have successes as we move ahead? Um, but we also uh want to use that first meeting to get feedback from people on what do you want to see for the creek? Uh, you know, what, how do you hope the creek will be used? How do you hope, uh, it will, will look, uh, what are your hopes for it being a community amenity? Um, and then, then we hope to have more targeted meetings with the public. And, and like I said, uh, the, the product in the end would be planned sufficient enough that to bust a pool, if they wanted to move ahead uh, could apply for grants. You know, they could use these plans to apply for grants to do construction drawings. Um, even uh more hydraulic modeling of the plans or uh, you know, taking its next step uh to actual construction.
Thank you Riley, and um I will note, I think, uh, we do have a, I, I did let a number of folks know from our various committees uh, and city council know about tonight's meeting, and I know some of them may actually have some preliminary thoughts um, that they'd like to share now during public comment and the commissioners. Um, and uh just to note, we did receive one uh such letter from the public, um, from former commissioner Kate Howe. Um, both thanking the commission, uh, that, that was forwarded to the commission, um, but both thanking the commission for taking this on uh, and the council, um, and also providing some input um for that. And Riley, I'll make sure you get, you and Jessica get a copy of that letter as well. Um, but Chair Fritz, I don't know if you want to start with planning commission questions and then open up for public comment?
Yeah, so if uh any planning commissioners have any questions for Riley or Jessica. Let me know, raise your hand, wave at me. Say hi, jump in.
I think Everett's got his, your hand up.
Alright, I, I can't see him on my screen, but alright, go ahead Everett.
Okay. Uh, first of all Riley, I really appreciate all the time and effort that you put into this. And um, we're very fortunate to have come across you and I want to thank Lynn Dietler for having introduced us and put us together um to kind of just see what, what is possible uh for that. Um, uh, I'm definitely very excited about this project and, and uh what we can accomplish. Um, cou- couple of questions that I have, uh, one is, once the uh creeks are restored. Um, I would imagine that there may be some maintenance um that needs to go on, some monitoring of those creeks and so forth. Um, and usually with a lot of projects, as you know, we know the, the projects are funded and then not much thought is given to after that. So um, how, in your experience, how have those uh been handled? Uh, and are there grants for uh maintenance and, you know, ecological stuff?
Uh, unfortunately, I'm not aware of grants. Uh, the, uh, grant programs that maintain creeks. Uh, typically cities are maintaining these spaces to begin with. Uh, we try to design creeks that are very sustainable on their own. Uh, there's a number of, yeah, I have a book out on a east, uh, that's called Restoring uh Creeks in, in Urban Neighborhoods. And um, most of the cases in that book, there's been very little maintenance. Uh, you know, there's about a dozen cases in there with the creeks pretty much maintaining themselves. Now, there's some instances, uh, let's say the city of Berkeley has a youth program. Uh, Berkeley Youth um Alternatives. And they would uh provide money to that youth program every year anyway. And the youth program would uh maintain Strawberry Creek. Um, sometimes uh there are, are volunteer groups that organize people to maintain the projects. On Berkeley, uh, where we put quite a few projects. Uh, the use of herbicides is not allowed. So uh volunteer efforts have been very important to keeping things weeded. Um, I think it's a, it's a great idea to involve schools, like the students at Thousand Oaks School and their teachers uh get involved with that creek. Um, so you know, it's, it's really a community by community come up with a creative way of maintaining the site. You have uh somebody from the city maintaining Ives Park, for example. Um, and so what I think we'd have to do in that situation And so what I think we'd have to do in that situation is have a training session for the park maintenance people so that they understand they have, you know, a different kind of creek out there now. In which, you know, they don't want to just chop all the trees down, but, you know, maintain them at a certain functionality.
I'd like to add as well, Commissioner Fernandez, that when you get one of these projects in the ground, sometimes you have to get permits from various government agencies. And they will have maintenance or they'll have monitoring requirements for the establishment of the plants. If your project is grant funded, it should be able to cover at least that period of monitoring. And another thing that we find a lot of times is that when people do planting projects with these stream restorations, if they plant the canopy trees and the understory at the same time, because the canopy trees are very young, the understory tree plants often don't do as well. And so you could also have follow-up funding, grant requests to do restoration of the understory that helps to develop the string corridor better and allows ways to kind of work to maintain the appearance of the creek with through that process.
Wait. And Riley, if you could just comment on the, in terms of the right word, the foundation that funded the assistance that we had applied for to help us with this?
Jessica, do you want to answer that?
Sure. So I'm a Switzer Fellow. At Switzer Foundation, it provides these environmental fellowships to graduate students. And so when I was a graduate student 20 years ago, they funded me as a fellow to do my graduate work, which was around urban streams. And then they have these follow-on grants for us once we're professionals called leadership grants. I had applied for one to work on a technical level with Riley because of her expertise and wanting to dig into some specific kind of technical work with her. And they awarded the project to me and her nonprofit, the Waterways Restoration Institute. And along the way, Riley thought this is a great place to apply some of those technical skills would be an actual restoration project. We were talking about monitoring projects and things like that. And but the opportunity to do a restoration design emerged because she was in Sebastopol and saw the opportunity. And so that's where that came from.
Great. And as far as the, how far the creek is followed along for restoration? So I know it's undergrounded right before it gets to Ives Park on Jewel Avenue. And then it continues through past, you know, post office as well area, railroad forest. How far in does it need to be considered so that it doesn't back up, as you mentioned, one of your examples, where it created some flooding downstream?
You know, I'm not sure. Rachel Kamen was noting the hydraulic constriction. Maybe Carrie can answer that question. But I think it was downstream toward 116. Is that right, Carrie?
I believe so, yeah.
Where Rachel Kamen was worried about hydraulic constriction in the system?
Yes, I think there's a couple of places. One is, yes, so Calder Creek does also, it is a watershed, but it's also a stormwater watershed. And so it is channel, it is in Culver's as it goes through downtown and makes its way towards railroad forest area where it daylights. And so, yeah, we do need to make sure the capacity, whatever we're doing upstream, that that water isn't going to, you know, is still going to have the capacity it needs in the pipes as it goes through downtown. One of the concerns the city has and one of the things we're working on is the fact that we do have a lot of sedimentation in the stormwater infrastructure that we currently have. And, you know, the city, and I know this commission just looked at and recommended to council and council adopted development impact fees updates, including a stormwater impact fee to help us address some of those issues. But yes, that is one of the considerations that, from a technical aspect, we'll be looking at as part of this project.
In terms of the boundaries that we're looking at, at this time, where the downstream boundary we're looking at is the forest park. And then the upstream, Lynn has done some outreach to some neighbors up there. So we do want to look upstream of Ives Park in case there's some interesting opportunities with the private property owners upstream of the park.
And I've noticed in a lot of the projects, it makes sense to trails along the creek and that's kind of a separate funding source or from that standpoint, it kind of goes together, right?
You know, there are grant programs like the Coastal Conservancy, the River Parkway Program, where they will accept grant proposals for creek corridors and trails together. And even fun things like bridges.
Okay. And just, I know that Sebastopol has a master plan for the park that was, you know, created a while back, but I would imagine just the processes, figure out what can be done effectively with the streams and then go back and revisit a master plan that was was set up. I would imagine that's kind of what the process is.
Yeah, and I can address that. Thanks Riley. I can address that because actually Commissioner Fernandez, that was actually one of the questions that the council had for me when we were approving the agreement for Waterways Restoration Institute. And, yeah, so obviously the channel, the Calder Creek, as it moves through Ives Park is a major component that goes from one end to the other. And what that ultimately looks like, you know, as you saw on the slide show, some of Riley's images showed a straight channel becoming much more meandering. And that would change the footprint. And so that will help inform if there are changes to the master plan that we want to look at. It felt like, let's not start making changes until we kind of understand what the creek wants to be and what the city wants the creek to be in terms of that footprint. And then we can go from there in terms of any adjustments to the other components.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you Riley and Jessica for your efforts on her. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us to the meeting.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Vice Chair, I'm sure has her hand raised?
Yes, thank you. Our park is really an urban park. It's just a couple of blocks off the center of town. And we have a lot of people walking right in there. This is not between some buildings, between warehouses and apartments. It's right in the middle of a park. And even with the fences we have now, I always see children climbing the fences and running around inside the park. So I'm concerned that we really need to plan pathways, natural looking pathways, maybe with hardscape surfaces down to the water. Is that something that you think is appropriate for a creek restoration in this urban park? Because I'm not seeing that look in any of the examples that you've shown.
I, you know, I think different creek designs use different ways of helping people get access to the creek channel. Sometimes just kid trails or people trails. Sometimes there's more formal access down to the creek. And so I, you know, that's something for us to talk with the community about. How do you want to see access to the creek? That Santa Rosa example, they have three different layers of trails. Some take you right down to the water, some take you along the floodplain and some take you along the very top of the terrace. So there's a lot you can do with trails and access, everything from a footpath to something more formal.
And is that, so that's something that, based on the community conversations that we have in the future, that if people wanted that, that's something that you could do and still maintain the hydrology within the creek and protect the edges from erosion, et cetera?
I think so. I think that it's definitely part of the landscape architecture component of the project to think about that interplay of access and ecology.
Thank you, because I think that's going to be real important in our community. And for me as well.
Any other commissioners? Any comments, questions at this moment?
Commissioner Lynn Bush is standing.
Go ahead Luke. Thank you. Thank you so much, Riley, for the presentation. Included a couple of examples of some of my favorite river and creek walks, including San Luis Obispo, which I think is kind of at a scale that is really workable for our community. And also just really inspired by my visit a couple of years ago to San Antonio, Texas and seeing really the Riverwalk. And I think, going back to what you referenced about the business community really being part of that, it really is, you know, a thoroughfare that links the downtown to so many other different parts of town and creates a pedestrian experience. So I guess my question on that is just the challenges of site acquisition, of property acquisition to potentially daylight some of these in a more urban setting beyond the park? Kind of what does the process look like in terms of funding? If there were going to be any downtown parcels that would need to be acquired or city-owned parcels that would need to be converted? Just kind of wondering how much the scope would be included under a project like this?
You know, the concept plan could look at all of that. You know, taking parking lots and turning them into public spaces or access. So, you know, there's nothing we will take off the table in terms of what the community is proposing. In terms of how do communities implement those kinds of plans? These grant programs I'm talking about have funds for land acquisition, for easements, for redeveloping areas so that they're more green. So, you know, we actually don't lack funding sources for these kinds of components. These bond acts that we vote on every two to three years for parks and water projects, they fill the coffers of these grant programs. So they're constantly being refunded by these bond acts. So, you know, basically, you know, the trick to this system is to get some good community support, get some good concept plans with, you know, enough detail. It's a, you have a topographic base map, you have plans to scale and all that. And then sell the granting agencies on your redevelopment plan, your trails, your creek access, your ecological goals. Yeah, so there's certainly many, many small towns in California who've gone through this process.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Vice Chair has an additional question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I had another question. I've heard that some restored urban creeks will also include a culvert underneath them to carry away floodwaters. Is that true? And is that something that we might consider in the park? I'm thinking of ways to raise the water and not have such deep channels in the park where right now we've got the sort of WPA-like walls. Is that something that we might consider through the park?
That would be pretty expensive. I don't know if the state grant programs would you know, look kindly on the cost effectiveness of something like that. However, we did talk about the Napa example, Napa Creek, where they split the flows and there was one, you know, larger channel and one smaller channel. There might be an opportunity to do something like that. We also gave the example of even short floodwalls that are attractive, like WPA walls, it might be two feet high, can buy a lot of floodplain capacity. So, I mean, in this design process, we want to look at those.
Thank you.
Okay. And Chair Fritz, before we go to public comment, I did want to introduce one of our partners. We actually have Anne Morckill from the new executive director, well, new-ish executive. I've only met her once in person since COVID for the Laguna Foundation. She has a background of many, many years with U.S. Fish and Wildlife service and is, yeah, and if you wanted to say a few words, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Thanks, Carrie. Hi, everybody. Really interested in this project and appreciated the presentation, Anne. And so I'm relatively new, having joined 18 months ago, but during COVID here with the Laguna Day Center Rosa Foundation, but just tracking this project and would love to be part of the process and in the design and working with you all. So thank you very much.
And just in terms of context, the Laguna Foundation has been critical in providing some of the habitat restoration. They actually provided some restoration in-kind services for our AmeriCorps Trail Grant. And those types of things also play into the funding and just the ability to have the stewardship that we were lucky to have them as a partner.
Great. Go ahead Deborah.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation and I'm excited about the potential. And it's so nice to have Laguna involved as well. I guess my question is, and I might have missed this somewhere, is what are we looking at as far as a timeframe? So realistic timeframe of, you know, from working through the project to when it would start? What are we, what are we looking at?
That's a good one.
Sure. The grant, we'll be working on the grant from September. We're really kicking off today with you folks, but our design work and visioning will be starting in September and continuing through the end of the year. And from that point on, we will be, you will have these concept plans that you can package into grant applications that, you know, usually when you submit a grant, it takes a good nine months to a year for it to be considered and awarded. And then you have a contracting process that goes for quite a few months. And then the project begins where you would be doing the construction documents. That can be a year or two with the permits. And then another year for the construction. So realistically, we're looking at a timeframe of four to five years to break ground.
And one last question. With the issues we're going on with water shortage right now and what we're, you know, kind of dealing with fire, water shortage, climate change, how does this affect or has it affected your overall plans in restoration since we're looking at water, you know?
Right. Well, and I have a more Southern California perspective on this. I do live in Humboldt County now, but so I have a little bit of the two ends of the state point of view on this. You know, in a lot of situations, restoring a stream improves your groundwater because you're actually able to see water, stream flows percolate in floodwaters. You slow the flows of floodwaters when you spread it out on the floodplain. The more floodplain you can give back to the stream, the better. Because it's not just slowing down the flows and making it less of a hazard, but it's also percolating into the groundwater table. And so where we can leverage that, you're actually augmenting your water supply. You're also creating a zone where the plants are well hydrated. And because of that, they are less likely to catch fire. And I don't know if you've seen examples of burn areas, but a lot of times you'll see that where there's been fires, everywhere except the stream corridor has burned. And that's because the vegetation there is able to resist. It doesn't become fuel as fast because it has water in its tissue.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Great, thanks. Yeah, I think it was a great, good presentation. I appreciate you guys being here. I'm super excited about this project. I also want to follow what Kathy said earlier, you know, one of my pet peeves about Oives Park is how, I mean, even when we have the nice grassy area next to the creek, we don't allow anyone near it. You know, and it just seems like such a shame to have this lovely little, you know, waterway through, through the center of the park. That's kind of, you know, like Carrie says, kids climb it all the time and get in there, which is what kids do. And you want to I hope, I hope that we can invite people to, you know, be more in touch with that element. Cause I think it is such a lovely opportunity that is unfortunately not realized right now. And also just wondering, in terms of the, you know, your work at this point, you, you mentioned, you know, having a concept plan to use for grant applications. Will you guys be helping with the grant application process? Or is that kind of just for the city then to take on and go through that? Or how does that work?
Under the current grant that we have, we don't have funding available to help with writing the grant, but that's something we can certainly talk about at that time and see if there's a way to help out.
Okay, thanks. Well, at this point, I'd like to open this up for public comment. So if there's any members of the public that would like to speak, please either raise your actual hand or virtual hand and our planning director will call on you and you will have three minutes to make your comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Fritz, and we do have a timer. But if you, as we'll ask, if you can see the timer, if you can't, we can give you a 30 second warning. And I see a couple of people do know that there is at the bottom of your screen, if you're on a computer or tablet, there is a icon that says raise hand. But if that doesn't work, you can also, you know, physically raise your hand as well and try to note. I'm going to go ahead and call on Rick Coats first. Rick?
Yes, thank you. I'm the Executive Director of Forest Unlimited. And we've had an urban forestry project for some time. Our concern would be riparian zone along the creek. And preservation of the mature redwoods that are in the park right now. I think they're extremely important in terms of climate change. Planting trees is wonderful, but if we consider how little time we have left to prevent climate change from ballooning into even more disasters, we need to keep trees standing, particularly large trees that, that store lots of carbon. I also happen to be Executive Director of a second organization called Eco Ring, which promotes ecotourism and green travel. And we too have some concerns. Trails along the creek would be wonderful. We would very much encourage you to daylight the creek from Ives to the Laguna beneath the two highway, 116 highway routes. With a trail beside it connecting to the Joe Rodota Trail. We view this as a, a form of sort of a tourist net, if you will, capturing tourists when they see a green belt across the highway. To stop, maybe have a picnic in the park, maybe walk down and do some shopping. Also, we think there's an opportunity for housing right along the creek there and the, what is now the parking lot with both live-in spaces and, and commercial ground floor, perhaps with parking beneath all that. We agree that there should be plenty of access to the creek, particularly for the kids and for the, the schoolchildren. I say that as an ex-teacher of both math and science, and science is really important here in the whole scheme of things. So, this is exciting. I hope that it will be fully vetted and fully informed. And the project has great, great potential. I see it as something similar to what the city of up in Oregon that has all the Shakespeare festivals did with their creek. And there it actually does act as a kind of tourist net to get tourist business. Otherwise, our tourists just keep right on going to the river. And it'd be nice to, to glean a little from them on their way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm, we do have, are joined by our mayor tonight, so she has her hand raised, so you know, I'm going to call on you next.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I successfully unmuted myself. Wow, this is a really great, great presentation. And just looking at all of those wonderful examples just begs you to think about the creek in Ives Park and that, you know, the nightmare of channelization and how much more wonderful it would be if it was accessible. And there wasn't a chain link fence surrounding the, this creek. It just will be such an improvement to, to change that. However, I have this one question and over the years, we, we have been told over and over, you know, way back, I know, 30 years ago, when we first started talking about how to fix this, you know, the channelization disaster. We, we kept being told that there were liability issues with having no fencing around a creek in an urban park because of children. And I'm just, I have a question about if, if somebody could address that. And I know that I'm not used to being on this side of the clock, so maybe you all could answer that when I'm done. And, and then my other thoughts were just to, as you all are thinking about this, is to think expansively also. Because there has been talk for a number of years of this, not just daylighting the creek in the park, but having a whole daylighted creek, creek way that goes all the way from the park through like kind of creating a view shed of an expanded creek that where it's undergrounded next across from the art center in that parking lot underneath what was the old boomers, but now is the taqueria and, you know, that whole thing, all the way down to the Laguna. And so thinking big and, but thinking about that being a greenway and what could be on either side of that greenway. These are all big picture things to be thought of, though when we start talking about that, we're talking about really expensive, I would imagine, but but planning things with that in mind so that there, you know, it could be a staged kind of process might be something that you all might want to consider. But I'm, I'm just thinking of the, the pushback in terms of liability issues that we need to be able to address because the, some of the public may go, oh, no, no, what if a kid falls in the creek? So, just, that's my big question. But thank you all. This is a wonderful presentation and thanks to the Planning Commission for and to Carrie and our staff and everybody for putting this together and to you all and all your work. So, thanks.
Thanks, Una.
Thank you. Okay, and, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just, Riley, did you want to speak to the liability issues?
I, I was gonna say, can we, we'll just do all the public comment and then you can answer all the questions all at once. How about that? That's okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair Fritz. So next we have Michael and I, your last name starts with S and I can't, I don't think I can pronounce it. Thank you very much. Please go ahead, Michael.
All right, thanks. Great presentation and I, I was reminded of visiting many of those places and those creeks stood out to me as, you know, the most memorable in San Luis Obispo and even LA, you know, I, I really enjoyed biking the LA River. And, and was just in Santa Rosa biking those rivers. So, really enjoy biking next to a, a river and riparian watershed. I think it's great to daylight Calder Creek and expand the opportunities for outdoor recreation. And I think it also does support our groundwater sustainability management goals by allowing more water to infiltrate into the ground and aquifer before, or giving it more opportunity to do that instead of being in concrete or culverts. So, I think this sets a lot of marks, this project with greener transportation options, access to nature, sense of place, green business development or, or, you know, bringing development to the area and outdoor recreation, water sustainability. It's all great. I do really like the opportunity for the Apple Blossom Trail to continue and help get kids to school safely along that route on bike. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Michael. Next we have Stephen Pierce.
Yes, I, I really appreciated the presentation tonight and walked through that park a few times a day on my way to and from work. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to this. I, I do want to second the concerns that Una brought up, that the potential liability issues. It, it seems like that's always been what's held us back over the years. And there's another concern that we do have a, a wonderful farm on, on Leland, but it does have some implications for naturalizing the creek. We have an upstream pollution issue that needs to be looked at and thought of when designing this naturalization project. And on, on that liability issue, the, my wife just recently saw a Facebook post from a, a woman from 50 years ago in the park that almost drowned when she was six years old there in the creek. I think it was back when they actually had the, the divider there at the dam part. So there was a bit of a swimming hole. I'm sure we're not talking about anything like that, but it's an example of liability issues that because the fence was there, and now if we take down the fence, what then? So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. And next we have William Greenman. William, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, did I succeed?
There we go. Thank you, William.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I would just like to echo the gratitude of virtually all the speakers for the Planning Commission taking this, taking up this issue. And also I'm very grateful for Jessica and Riley's work in the presentation. I live at the upstream location about oh, a thousand yards or so from where the Calder Creek comes out of the culvert into Ives Park. So, I'm the beginning of that culvert on Jewel Avenue. Now, I know that Riley, I believe, mentioned that upstream issues in could be well taken into account. And I want to echo my enthusiasm for not only the opportunity to do some restoration and trailmaking work upstream, but also to voice the need for taking into consideration possible flooding and issues that make it necessary to take that into account for any other downstream work that would be done. I know, thanks to Lynn Deedler, I've had the opportunity to discuss this with Diana Rich and Everett Fernandez, who have visited my end of, of the culvert at Culver Creek and are aware that these are both issues and opportunities. And I would just like to say that I welcome the opportunity to work with all of the powers that be in the community to create a great amenity, which we have the possibility to do during the virtually entire length of Calder Creek. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Liam.
Thank you, William. And next we have a council member, Rich, although council member, or if you're speaking to a member of the general public.
Yeah, so I want to make it clear that I'm here not as a council member today, but as a member of this community. And just thank the Planning Commission for bringing this idea to, to the community and also for for Riley and Jessica's contributions. Always nice to see interesting ideas like this. And then also perhaps, this has already been addressed, but if someone could comment on the opportunities that will be integrated into the timetable here for input from the community as you're going through this process, I would appreciate that. So, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you. And next we have Lynn Deedler.
Hi, I, I'm really delighted to hear all the very positive comments about this. And, you know, it's like Calder Creek is a real town treasure. Very few towns have a creek that runs through them that runs all year round and we have one. We, we saw many in the pictures, but those are probably very few in the whole Bay Area and all of Northern California where they have this beautiful resource. And for the last couple decades, it's just kind of been ignored all the way across town. Buried under blackberries, it's fenced off in Ives Park and become kind of barren around there. And it would be so wonderful to have our park center of town of nature and a, a beautiful centerpiece like this. And I'm, I'm glad everyone sees it. The you know, Bill Greenwood, who just spoke a few, a few minutes back, is one of many neighbors on the upper part of Calder Creek, would love to see the creek restored. And in the section between Jewel and Leland, all but one is for it. And that person is, goes back and forth. So, that, anyway, I want to participate in it and I am so glad to hear this kind of enthusiasm. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn. Anybody else? Do you care?
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised, although I am tempted as a member of the community to raise my hand and make a public comment too, which is, which is mostly that I'm, I'm really pleased that I can have a part in a, a project like this. I actually lived for a brief period in Golden, Colorado, and they actually have a wonderful creek walk, including a walk that goes underneath a bridge that gets flooded every year and that's just part of it. And so, you know, when Kathy talks about, you know, being able to be close to the street and have pathways there, I, I do certainly see that there are potential opportunities to do that with this, with this project as well.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Carrie. So, yes, and now could Jessica or Riley address the, the liability question?
Yeah, you know, the liability issue flipped. Many of you have mentioned how you remember earlier, there were these liability worries about Calder Creek. And the, the chain link fences went up. Yeah, the, what started to happen with these channelization projects is the whole idea behind channelization is to make the water go as fast as possible. Now, so you rip out all the meanders, you rip out the vegetation, you put in this very efficient trapezoidal shape with concrete, and you make the water go real fast as a result. And, you know, you get it off to the Laguna. That started to kill children in particular. You know, the, the deaths in the LA River began to rise of kids who cut through the chain link fences, got in the river, and there was no way to get them out. And so the Public Works Department of Los Angeles County produced a video called No Way Out to try, to go to all the schools in that area to try to warn kids to stay away from the to try to go to all the schools in that area to try to warn kids to stay away from the LA River and the local creeks. So, it became actually a safety issue to take those chain link fences away, to slow down the velocities, to create flood plain, to create roughness like trees and meanders to slow the water down. And if you're a kid going down with a creek with high water, you've got less steep slopes, you've got trees to hang on to. And so, it's actually, like I said, the liability issue just flipped, that it's safer to have a restored creek rather than a culvert. Go through a school ground, you can get a kid's, go down in the culvert and just get flushed through. Walnut Creek has had that issue and kids going through fences and taking their rafts and trying to go down flood control channels and dying. So, it's safer if you have a restored creek than if you have one of these old style flood control channels.
Great, thank you. And then another question, which just, you know, I mentioned a little bit earlier, but can you talk a little bit more about the sort of the community input when the community meetings will occur and how that will be shaped or?
Right. Jessica is going to be taking control of the design and planning process, and we'll be talking soon to set up some sort of schedule that we can get out to the Planning Commission, the City Council, the public. So, that is our next step.
I would just add that we do plan to have, as Riley had mentioned earlier, a meeting where we talk about lessons learned and what works and what doesn't in stream restorations, where we also want to talk about the master plan and talk about how the stream can work with it and really hear from members of the public about what is important to them about the master plan as well as the creek and what their thoughts are about how that can work together. We'll have a follow-up meeting where we present some alternative concept layouts, ideas, where we would like to get more feedback. So, there'll be a couple of really structured opportunities for that feedback. And, you know, we also hope to be able to reach out to various stakeholders in small groups if possible to get, you know, if there's constituencies that have very particular points of view on things, it's helpful to talk to them.
Yeah, great. As I say, would these be Zoom, kind of this format, Zoom virtual meetings, I imagine?
I think that really depends on coronavirus.
I also wanted to just note that, I don't know if everyone saw, but Carrie posted in the chat email address if you want to be on the email list to get future notifications of these meetings that are coming up. The email address, if you click on the chat button at the bottom of your screen, you'll see that email address, and that's how you can stay involved.
Thank you, Carrie. Sure, Fritz, that's exactly what I was going to let people know about. And if you can't get to the chat, if you go to the city's website in the Planning Department page, Rebecca Mansour is a senior admin assistant, and her email is on the website. That's who you should send the email to. If you can't find her email, you can send me an email as well, and I'll get it to her.
Great. Do any other commissioners have any final thoughts or comments?
Commissioner Fernandez has his hand raised.
I just wanted to, just also adding my input, this is a great project that's going to be kind of focused in certain areas. And I think we need to kind of look at the bigger picture as well and imagine that, you know, a trail or a path going through our town, such as the Apple Blossom Trail, and to consider doing things along the way, not waiting until those creeks are restored. As an example, the owner of the cemetery, Pleasantville Cemetery, is supportive of allowing individuals to walk through his property there, and that could be part of the trail. And so, while we can and while that owner is supportive to seek those opportunities and also for the city to kind of think ahead and look at what is a possible trail going through town so that when projects come up, that can be taken into consideration. So, I just wanted to make sure we open up to what the possibilities are and what can be done along the way.
Great. Thanks, Everett. I see Luke, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I want to echo Commissioner Fernandez in thinking about how we can be looking at the bigger picture here. Also, just want to express appreciation for all of the members of the public who commented. I think that there is so much potential for this to really be expansive beyond the borders of Ives Park and bring a greater sense of connectivity, a greater sense of nature, a greater sense of cohesion to the way that people experience our downtown Ives Park and interact with nature in our community. So, I agree with Mayor Glass that we should be looking at going big on this. And as much as possible, I think in the communications that are in the time to come too, as much as possible, if there can be a visual showing, you know, here's where the Calder Creek is, here's where it starts, here's where it stops, here's, you know, kind of what's on top of it, here's where it goes through the park, I think that would just be really helpful for people in the community, especially the really engaged stakeholders, landowners, business owners, you know, what have you, who are along that path, to really be shaping this as a community and looking at how we can take on this really massive undertaking, but also have it be something that pays off for our community as a whole. And I'll just end on one thought to follow up on one of the examples that was provided with the San Antonio River Walk. I think the thing that really inspired me about it was not how it was naturalized. It's actually not really very naturalized at all. It's pretty much just a channel with a lot of sidewalks going down to it, but it's really accessible for people to be able to get to it. So, whether that's, you know, someone being able to really get down to the water in the park or having a way where it's just daylighted, it might be a more conventional channel as it goes through downtown, I think that would just be really helpful. And the thing that was really compelling about it, and I think that made it feel really safe and successful as well, is that there are a lot of, you know, there are homes along the River Walk. There's also a lot of businesses that have, you know, their entrance on the street, but there's, you know, the main attraction of some of the restaurants and bars and everything along there is having a patio that actually just faces out to the river. So, I hope that for Saspul, I hope that Santa Rosa can continue to do some of that as well. I really think that some of these features are some of the key to exactly what we're looking for in our community. So, just want to really express appreciation to everybody who's with us and who will be in the years to come. So, thank you.
Thanks, Luke. And I also just want to say, you know, yeah, thanks to the members of the public for showing up tonight. We don't often get very many members of the public Planning Commission meetings, especially when they're supportive of something we're talking about. We can also often get people to planning commission meetings, but they don't like what we're talking about, but they have so much support for something, it's very exciting. So, thanks for taking your time out of this evening and attending.
And I did have one other question in the chat, if I may, from the public, which was whether or not the scope would look all the way to the Joe River to trail. And I think just the big picture concept is going to look at the creek alignment. One note, and Riley and Jessica, please expand on that. One note that I did, I have discussed with Riley is that, you know, while a lot of the creek is on people's private property, the city does have a creek ordinance, which is pretty basic. It's actually what a lot of communities did, just in terms of localizing flooding, which was to require a 30-foot from top of bank setback for any structures. Unfortunately, it does not talk about anything that's not considered a structure like paving and patios and things like that. And so, one of the things that, just in terms of private voluntary efforts and stewardship, but also potentially if there are ways the city's creek coordinates could be enhanced, I think that's one of the things I haven't talked with Riley about in terms of, which may be a good concept outcome from this project as well.
I just have one last thought. Yeah, I was going to, you know, pick up on what Mayor Glass said as well and has been spoken so eloquently about, which is, you know, I'm always a big believer in work backwards. So, I'm just wondering, you know, you had said you're going to be spending, you know, the next, you know, September till the end of the year, working on this plan for the creek. And so, just to kind of, you know, finalize that thought, you know, if we're thinking big and we want to work backwards, and this is just a small part of the overall concept in the plan that we could do, how would that bigger picture be incorporated? And is that something that you would take on in this to leave us with this kind of master plan, and then we can piece it, or is that something we need to address separately?
That's a really good question. The grant that we have is really about stream restoration, and a lot of the comment that refers to the bigger picture is about trail connectivity and how that relates to the community as a whole, as well as, I think, I might be saying this wrong, but maybe economic development goals. And I think that we can, we can take the input that people have about that and tie it in graphically, but I think to really work it out as a trail system, that should be its own project. And I would recommend, it's certainly, you know, in a separate sort of vein, that's something we could undertake, but it's not covered under the funding we have.
I think my understanding, though, is that the creek is much broader also than the section that you're focusing on. So, could you focus, you know, on top of the other issues of what you said as well?
Riley, the extent of the creek we're looking at goes from, I think, Jewel to the Forest Park, correct?
Yeah, I think it could go up to some properties above Jewel, because we have some interested property owners. But then it would go down to the Forest Park at 116. So, that's what we've been talking about in terms of looking at the creek corridor. But we could show graphically what could be done with some trails or public access, but I think Jessica's right. You probably want to have an actual trail planning, you know, product. This is more of a creek product, which could involve a trail, right? Putting our time into, how should that creek look? And how should that creek fit through this landscape?
Right, and thank you, Riley. I'll also add a note that, you know, when you're talking about trails, you start to look at, you know, does the city have the rights to that or not? And you're looking at a lot of private properties, and that would take council direction and willing property owners. And if there's one unwilling property owner that sort of puts a glitch in it, we have to find another way around and things like that. And so, you know, this part is really focused on helping us move the Ives Park Calder Creek project forward, but also looking at how people can be good stewards of their land, especially upstream where it's not in a culvert. And then downstream, I call it railroad forest, I guess other people call it forest park, where it daylights out to the Laguna and, you know, is one of our two watersheds, down into important watersheds down into the Laguna.
That said, I think we can think about the trails, especially through Ives Park and in these sort of downtown areas where the private property issues may be less sensitive.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll say just, you know, I'm probably sitting 20 or 30 feet from the Calder Creek culvert right now. It goes actually under the property where my office building is, so. Yeah, I mean, I think that would be interesting to look at that whole section, to see what could be and see, you know, it may not all happen at once, but to have at least an overall plan for, you know, best case scenario in the future, it'd be great. If no one else has any comments, I'll thank Riley and Jessica for coming tonight and introducing this measure. And we look forward to the next several months and the final product.
The pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Well, we will then continue on with the rest of our meeting. And so, we have, next on the items on the agenda is our subcommittee updates. Does anyone have any subcommittee issues to report on?
Commissioner Fernandez has his hand raised, and Vice Chair Andrews, her hand raised.
Okay, go ahead, Everett.
Okay. I just want to report on our meeting from the Zero Waste Committee. We had talked about a variety of things as far as the ordinance coming by the state and trying to help restaurants and businesses to adhere to some of those requirements and kind of in a friendly fashion. One thing I had brought up that was added to the agenda was something that I had come across when we were, as part of the park's subcommittee, and that is that a lot of the recycled cans throughout the city that are not, the materials not being recycled, and the reason being is that it mixed in with a lot of other garbage. And it's kind of a safety hazard for staff and so forth to kind of go through that. So, where we, you know, as a community have the impression that you put something in the recycle bin and that it gets recycled, isn't quite happening. Larry was there, the city manager, and it was great to have him there. He mentioned that, you know, they're aware of that, it's something that they've been trying to figure out how to deal with. One suggestion was perhaps to make sure that the recycle bins, you know, some of the openings are smaller in some where you can't put a lot of things in there, just more bottles and containers and so forth. But it's something that's being looked at, addressed, to see how more can be recycled, how it can be separated out from that standpoint. So, that's just from a local standpoint, that's something that's happening along the way.
Thanks, Everett. Kathy?
Yes, I got some really good news. We had been talking about how to replace the white PVC pipe in Ives Park that surrounds the children's play area and keeps the chips in. And I've heard now, it was a rumor when I first heard it, and may still be a rumor, but I think Rotary is planning to put in wood timbers, which would be, I mean, the ideal solution, I nearly jumped up and down when I heard this, was very excited about that. I'm not sure of the timing on that, but I believe it would happen if and when the asphalt replacement occurs. At the same time, I know that Dante has been in communication with Kate Haug, who wanted to donate money for a picnic bench and tree that they had hoped to put in the corner of the children's play area and to figure out how and who would pay for the replacement of the fence to lower it around the time of the asphalt replacement. So, those things are being talked about and probably are in the process of occurring. I don't have an exact update as of today, but I was so excited to hear that we do have a solution for the white PVC pipe. Yes, and Kathy, I did see, I believe that has been finalized at this point. The Rotary Foundation will be doing the repairs to the wood stage as well. I don't know, and replacing the plastic with redwood border material. And that was through the Rotary Improvement Grants, and so, yes. And then, yes, there'll be a new large, well, 36-inch box, which is pretty large, and a tree, as well as a picnic table and a section of fencing from Kate's donation. So, very thankful for that. And so, yes, and the other piece of it is the Public Art Committee has begun to review the submissions for the Sculpture Garden. I know if you've been down there lately, obviously you've seen the plints, the pads for them, that Public Works installed with pretty minimal funding from our park fund. And we did get, I believe, nine or 10 submissions for the Sculpture Garden. The Public Art Committee has another meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks to continue to review those submissions. I'm looking for probably installation in early October, I'm guessing. That does need to go to council for final approval. And looking for probably installation in early October, I'm guessing. That does need to go to council for final approval for those and whatnot before those get installed.
And the parking lot, the High Street parking lot across from the Center for the Arts is getting some landscape rehabilitation with, there are three new trees in there now. I believe there is going to be some shrub, shrubbery put in and some round cobblestones that are firmly positioned in place for easier maintenance. So that will be worked on in the coming months. It's already happening now. It's very exciting.
Yeah, I noticed the trees actually today, I was through that parking lot, some good sized grape myrtles, so it was great, yeah. Great, thanks Kathy. Anyone else have anything to report, the subcommittee?
And Luke has his hand raised.
Thank you. So as the commission's been apprised, this unfortunately will be my last meeting with the planning commission. And so that's my subcommittee update ultimately as well, but there'll need to be a new liaison to the Climate Action Committee. I know the Commissioner Burns is also on that committee as a business member, so I'm not sure if, you know, she'll be serving as kind of the de facto liaison or if another one will be selected. But I just wanted to say, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with each and every one of you. It has been a wealth of information, a wealth of inspiration, and really just, I can't think of anything better to have done on, you know, every other Tuesday night during this pandemic than spend it with you and really get deep into some of the issues that we've been able to delve into. And it's just been a tremendous honor to serve my community in this way. So thank you all so much. And that's really my only update.
Thanks, Luke. It's been great having you on the commission and I'm sad, personally sad to see you go, but good luck with the next venture. That's very, very exciting for you.
Thank you.
Everett, go ahead.
Yeah, Luke, I just want to tell you how much I appreciated your viewpoints on a lot of projects that come up and very unique and always very direct and succinct and appreciate what you've brought. It's going to be difficult to replace, but I'm sure you have other opportunities coming up. But anyway, just want to tell you, you really have been an integral part and appreciate everything that you've brought into the planning commission and you will certainly be missed.
Thank you, Everett.
Great. Thanks. Carrie, you want to go on with the rest of the planning, your planning missions report?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Jeff Fritz. So a couple of items that are coming up that may be of interest to the planning commission at the next city council meeting on September 7th. They will be considering an additional extension to entitlements for existing entitlements. We did toll those last year due to COVID. And we are going to require, the staff is also requesting that they consider an additional extension of that with the COVID, Delta, Lambda, whatever variants you can think of going on that are still affecting the economy, obviously, that is still impacting some of the projects, both residential and commercial in town and their ability to do that. The, the other item that they will be considerable, two other items. One is the AmeriCorps Matching Grant Agreement. That's sort of a technical thing, that's the grant that we already received. But we do need council's authorization to execute that agreement, so that'll be just on the consent calendar. And then Regional Parks will be giving a presentation pretty much identical to what they gave the planning commission in February regarding the Pedaluma Sebastopol Trail, or that's what I want to call it, the Sebastopol Pedaluma Trail. And asking for council to consider resolution support as they try to move that project forward with funding, funding opportunities and working through the various implementation pieces for that. They will, council will also be discussing some of the water conservation efforts and considerations on the agenda. Believe that's, there's quite a few more items, so definitely if you're interested, check out the agenda. But I think those were the ones that are sort of in the planning commission realm of interest. And those are always, subcommittee will be giving an update as well, so we have a liaison here, so not so much of an issue for that. And I do, we do have an associate planner slated to start after Labor Day, so I'm very excited about that. Although we will continue with the contract staff, both Jeff and Kelly Hickler, who's been working on the Huntley Square and also a preliminary review for Habitat for Humanity for a site in 10, they'll be coming to the commission next month. For the commission meetings, I do anticipate both September meetings, we will have items. We did select the housing element consultant for Leaf, which is Luke's new employer, which is why he needs to resign because we kind of have the conflict issues there. They will be doing a, they've requested actually for their kickoff to have a joint planning commission city council meeting. And so we're looking at that being during a planning commission meeting, since city council meetings have so much stuff on them. And you guys are a bigger group, I think, no, which is a consideration of their schedule. But hopefully that works better for you as well. The city clerk Mary is checking with the council members to see which date works for them and then they'll schedule that. And we'll probably have that preliminary review on the other evening and any other items that might arise in the meantime.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? I just had a question, I was wondering what the status is of the Conestoga Huts at the community church, do you know, they started those or?
So I do not know if they've started, but it was not appealed, so the decision is final for that. I will have Jeff get in contact with them and see what their schedule is because I know there are certainly members of the commission who are interested in perhaps stopping by and seeing a little bit more about the concept. We'll share that information.
Great, thanks. Well, if no one has anything else, then I guess we are ready to adjourn. Again, good luck, Luke. We'll miss you, but have fun with the new job and maybe we'll see you back here in some capacity.
As a member of the public. And I will note one thing on that. The planning, if you recall, the planning commission geography for out of area resident was slated for the council to discuss already, but it got bumped to a future meeting. And so I probably will discuss size of the commission and make sure that they, you know, see if they want to recruit now for Luke's vacancy or we are holding some of our positions that have vacancies, like the designer review board that has an alternate vacant until the normal sort of cycle of committee advertisements, which is usually the fall. So we'll see that, see what council wants to do about that.
Actually, speaking of vacancies, are the city planning on hiring a new building official? Are we just going to go with the contract building official? Is that?
I think for now, especially during COVID, it's pretty difficult to recruit. So I think for now, they are planning on continuing with the status quo. If you do have any feedback, myself, Mary or Larry would be certainly happy to hear, especially from someone in the trade, so to speak, in terms of how things are going and if there are any things, anything we can do to improve it.
To be honest, I haven't had any Sebastopol projects, so I don't have any real feedback. It was just more of a curious curiosity. I have asked Patty a couple of questions, but nothing that, you know, she couldn't answer, so it's worked out pretty easy.
Sure, sure. And I will say, I've worked with contract building inspectors before, not necessarily official building inspectors. And when you have one person doing all the inspections like we do, it's much more like having a staff person. I've had contract where it's a different person and they don't get to know the community as well. Such a larger organization, I think the group we have is very well orchestrated, they know the Sebastopol issues and are able to go through those.
Alright, then I will adjourn this meeting until next time. Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff Fritz.